Johnny Cersei, where he's having a tough time right now, you know all about it. We just want you to give him a special blessing to just be with him and his family at this time, Lord, and watch over him, Lord, and let your will be done. We thank you again for all your blessings of life. We ask these things in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Our fight is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Messengers, our first item is unfinished business, approval of the minutes from the September twenty-second teleconference. Please let me know when you're ready to move forward.
I've read the minutes. I have no objection.
I have no objection.
All right. I'll ask for a motion for approval of the minutes.
Make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Minutes are approved. Okay, public commentary. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand, be recognized, and come forward to the podium. Anyone? Okay, public commentary is closed. Item number two is a variance request for Theodore and Kimberly, and if you're here, I hope I pronounce your name right, Strube, and this is to place a new home with porches thirty feet from the edge of Deer Crest Road. It's very steep off there, and there's really no other place for them to go. Is there anyone here that opposes this variance? Nobody? All right. Commissioner Patterson, what's your thoughts on this one, sir?
Well, I looked at it, and you're correct. Very steep, nice, beautiful views. What everybody's looking for. I don't see an issue with it this time.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
I don't have any issues.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion that we approve this variance for the Strubes.
I make motion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Variance is approved. All right, item number three is a variance request from Miss Kathy Berger Kaler, and this is to place a mobile home with a porch thirty-two feet from the edge of East Thomas Road, which is a county road. This property is elevated away from the road. I don't see any issues with it from my standpoint. Commissioner Patterson, do you have any thoughts, sir?
No, it is elevated a little bit. It has a bank. They'll cut that down and deal with it properly, so I don't see an issue.
Commissioner Johnson?
The only comment I have on this one is that point thirty-eight acres. And I was just wondering, is there city water out there? I'm sure this already went through land development, but it's not even a half acre lot, and I was just wondering. It may qualify through an old development. They have a safety schedule on the back, which it looks like... I mean, my only question is, if being point three-eight acres, if it'll all fit. I'm guessing by getting this far, someone else has already looked at it. I just haven't seen a lot of this size in a long time that would improve the variance on.
I think you should get a little help from the guys across the road that kind of know each other, relatives, whatever. So, I think you're right. I think they've looked at it, and I'm not for certain.
As far as variance, I don't have any issues with variance. I just, I haven't seen a point three-eight acre lot in a long time. Maybe something we won't check into. I have no issue with the variance, though. It would be nice to know if they... I'm pretty sure, I'm not sure on East Thomas, if there's city water, but I just know you can't have a safety tank in a well or a lot of that size. Pretty sure. But it may fall under some older development. But I'm sure the health department will catch it. They'd be there to do that, but as far as variance, I have no issue.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I have no issues with it. I'll make a motion that we approve this variance for Miss Kathy Berger Kaler. I'll make the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor? All right. Okay, item number four, Mr. O'Neil, come on down, sir.
You probably want some money, I'm guessing, or something.
Yeah.
I'll be glad when things start kicking in, and you start giving us money. We'll let you come and talk about that.
Got a couple of splash items. The first is, we'd like to purchase a new bus for the after-school and summer camp program. The bus we have now is a ten-passenger. It's got three hundred and fifty-six thousand miles on it. It's become a mechanical nightmare. So, we looked at Bluebird and Thomas buses. Bluebird did not have an activity bus that we're looking for available without ordering one, which would leave several months out. Thomas bus had one. It's a fourteen-passenger activity bus, identical to what the school system has, if you saw their buses. And that was fifty-six thousand five hundred dollars for that.
This really qualifies as emergency purchase, doesn't it? I mean, you're really trying to...
Yeah, we haul from east family. We have twenty-one kids in a program from east family, which, even with a ten-passenger bus, there's three trips. So, we're hauling them in the SUV and the county pickup, and we're making multiple trips, trying to get the kids from east to back to the rec center. So, it's the last two weeks been tough.
Eddie, this is a new bus?
It is a brand-new bus. It's a twenty-twenty model, yeah.
You got warranties and all that stuff in it?
Correct, yeah. It's got all the lap belts, all the safety features of a school activity bus.
Did you have more questions, Commissioner Patterson?
No, I'm fine.
Commissioner Johnson?
No, I mean, it's something you gotta have. They gotta be transported in, like, being able to carry a couple more passengers, and I think it's gonna help out a lot.
Yeah, the old bus is a ten-passenger.
Well, that's a new program that you started a couple of years ago, and it's been great for the community and the kids, and we can't put them in any safety issues or just not being able to participate because of lack of equipment. And you've got, certainly you have the funds and supplies to handle that. So, do I hear a motion? We approve this request made for a new Thomas bus safety, or ten-passenger bus with additional lap belts for safety for the amount of fifty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Do I hear a motion?
I make motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
And the next splash item, and this is working, of course, with our Parks and Rec Board. We'd like to put LED lighting into the rec facility along with LED scoreboards. The cost for that would be twenty-seven thousand eight thirty-seven. It currently just has the old floor acid bulbs, and there's five hundred and sixty-something bulbs in the gym. You know how four-hit some bulbs are, it's a constant battle. It's really not good to keep having to take scissors out of the wooden cords to consistently change bulbs. Plus, there's a huge energy savings with LED. And we would do that ourselves. We would just purchase supplies. My maintenance crew and Ed's maintenance crew would do the install.
It's been a problem for you out there for some time, hasn't it?
It is, yeah.
This is all in the center you're talking about, right?
That's at the rec center, correct.
You gave us a paper on that, didn't you?
No.
Twenty-seven thousand?
Twenty-seven, eight thirty-seven.
Eight thirty-seven?
Yeah.
When do you expect to get them in?
We gotta have them in by Thanksgiving before basketball season starts, and I've talked to Eddie.
Got any questions, Commissioner Johnson?
So, you're saying you don't have to change the fixtures, you're just changing the valves and the bulbs? Just the valves and bulbs, yeah.
There's a couple of fixtures that probably need to be replaced, but not the whole entire fixture.
And this again, splash, right?
Yes, correct. Yeah, the scoreboards are all the old ground socket scoreboards. It's a constant battle with that. These would be the wireless LED. They just weren't remotely from the scorer's stand.
I don't have any questions. Eddie, you discussed this with me quite some time ago and updated me on it, so I'm good with it. Commissioner Patterson, do you have any other questions on this, sir?
No other questions.
Anything, Commissioner Johnson?
Just go ahead.
No, you go ahead. I've got what I was going to say. I kept going, still. Did you have anything else?
No, just with basketball, just for that day. What we're doing there with COVID, football and soccer's going on, those are outside athletics. We're doing a lot of stuff to make that safe. Commissioner Patterson, this is some stuff we're going through. Basketball will be totally different than indoors, so we are currently meeting with all the local rec directors and try to do the same thing, because we do intermingle and play each other. So, we hope to have a COVID plan in the next couple of weeks of how we can, as safe as possible, make indoor athletics work. So, we'll probably only utilize half of the facility at a time, probably play on the two far courts, leave the middle open, so we don't have that traffic in the lobbies. Probably bring people in the front and out the exit doors on the side to keep that crowd out of the lobbies. So, we'll have, we hope to have that finalized pretty soon. But it is, it's different. It's gonna be tough, so... And it'll probably mean us closing on Friday mornings or six or seven hours every Friday to deep clean the facility. I don't know that we have a choice to do that with the fog machines and everybody, so there is concerns with that many people in such a confined space.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve this twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven-dollar purchase for Eddie to put in LED lights inside the Palmwood rec center?
Make the motion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? You made a clean sweep, Eddie.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome, thank you. Item number five, and this is, it's not, it's boiler service agreement, not broiler. I think broilers are chickens that have a very short lifespan until they wind up at Popeyes or Chick-fil-A, so it's boiler service agreement. And this is a request from the sheriff's office. And this is for the boiler over in the detention center in the basement. And it's basically a quarterly service maintenance agreement with combustion. That's the old combustion engineering company, Combustion Controls out of Chattanooga, for a service contract price, quarterly nine hundred and ninety-six dollars per visit, excluding the necessary equipment that may be needed. I know just in my past experience with boilers, you can't do enough to maintain boiler safety. It can be a very dangerous thing if it's not being handled properly. So, Commissioner Patterson, have you had a chance to think, formulate some thoughts on this?
Well, I looked at it. I do remember when way back, West Fanning and East Fanning, they had old boilers and all that. And like you said, they have a problem when they break down, so I don't have any issues with it. Get up to the bar.
Commissioner Johnson?
No, I have no problems with the boys. I feel a lot better knowing that someone is looking after that steam bulb.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
Yep.
You saw what it did to Commissioner Patterson when he got too close to it, so... All right, I'll ask for a motion that we approve the service contract with combustion and control solutions for a boiler maintenance agreement, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars per visit. I'll make the motion that we approve this. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
How many times a year do they get that, Chairman? It says per visit. How many years?
Quarterly.
Quarterly.
Every three months.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, item six is a bid proposal, Proposals for Pre-Contract for Disaster Debris Monitoring. Mr. Graham, you've got some bids that we need to look at?
We do.
Okay, come on in. I don't think I've ever seen so much paperwork and mind-blowing things from the government over something that we hope never happens. The likelihood of it, I guess, is, I don't know, jinxes, but I say it's small, but we've never had a hurricane in Fanning County.
Well, closest we came was when Oakley came through. It did some damage here. It was, I think, more of a tropical storm or depression by that point. It did do some damage here.
Do you want to go back over for some of the folks that weren't here before, what this is all about and what the process is?
If y'all remember back several months ago, we received and awarded a bid for disaster debris removal. So, FEMA wants us, in addition to that, that was just a pre-contract, no cost. In addition to that, FEMA wants us to have a company that monitors the company that's doing the debris removal to make sure that they're accurate with the weights and measures and volumes and stuff. So, that's what this is. There it is, a pre-contract. We don't activate unless we decide we want to, or it's a government. It would be activated if we activate the debris removal. So, there's no cost accounting to award this pre-contract. It just sits there in limbo, and hopefully, we never use it. But it's just another step to get that debris removal plan, which is the next step. Once we get this in place, then we can complete our plan and ask for approval from the commission.
And the location decided on this was already spanning?
Yeah, we actually found a couple of sites that we want to try to use. One is over East Fanning. There's a empty field behind the ball fields back there that, with the agreement that y'all signed last, or if you ask me, we're gonna be allowed to use that. And then also, we looked at the possibility of using the upper parking lot above the ball fields at the recreation park. Remember, this would be in a disaster situation, you know, to do that. Of course, the debris removal company is always responsible for putting it back like it was when it came in, so...
Yes, how many bids do you have, Mr. Austin?
Three.
Three, okay.
All right, this first bid is from...
Can you speak a little louder?
Yes, the first bid is from Debris Tech Electronic Debris Management System out of... Yeah, someplace in Mississippi.
How do you spell it? Now, I can spell Mississippi a little.
P-I-C-A-Y-U-N-E. It's one of those French words.
Piquine.
And as usual, I would ask that we could act with the bids, we'd like to have time to go over the bids. This is not gonna be the one figure, you know, it's gonna cost this much. It's so much per hour for these different things, so it'll take some compilation of figures and also looking at the companies to get the kind of material that we can do. So, you may not find a one number in the front or anything on that. It might be, should be actually, it's a little bit crazy.
Yeah, and how many we got to that? There's the original at two, and then there's an electronic version. They did provide their e-verification and a copy of their, or parents' admissions insurance.
You could probably use all the paper that they sent to Burke when they started, can't you?
We probably could.
And this is just for the monitoring?
This is just for the monitoring of the debris removal, yeah.
It doesn't do with the debris?
They just sent, they sent a man up in the tower where they run the debris, and he looks at the trucks, looks at the waste elements, whatever they're using, and makes sure that they're reporting the correct cubic yardage and stuff. They also do part of the paperwork for FEMA for us, so that we make sure we have all the ducks in the row, get the reimbursement.
All right, there's its own hourly rate, project manager sixty-five dollars per hour, operations manager fifty-five dollars an hour, field supervisor's forty-five dollars an hour, load site monitors thirty-two dollars an hour, debris site and tower monitors thirty-two dollars an hour, with a note that anything above forty hours per week is billed at one and a half times straight time rate.
One other thing I should mention, as I already mentioned, is this, if we ever activate one of these contracts, chances are we're gonna get the reimbursement for a regular dollar bill cost. That's the whole reason we're doing this. Have the bill to do, get the reimbursement.
Their name is, who's that?
And this one is... Thompson Consulting Services. Out of Lake Mary, Florida. And their...
Can you repeat the name again, please?
Thompson, T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N Consulting Services out of Lake Mary, Florida. I can say that. And their hourly rate is project manager sixty-five, operations manager forty-five, field supervisor forty, load site monitors twenty-nine, debris site and tower monitors twenty-eight per hour, and again, all hours over forty billed at one point five straight rate. And they have their required documentation as far as, uh, DNO, et cetera. And this is Tetra Tech out of Matlin, Florida. And they're, all right, they have a principal hourly rate. The other two had, for the category, principal hourly rate, had zero. Principal hourly rate sixty-five dollars, project manager sixty-five dollars, operations manager fifty-five dollars, field supervisor forty-five dollars, load site monitors thirty dollars and fifty cents, debris site and tower monitors thirty dollars and fifty cents. All hours in excess of forty hours per week will be billed at one point five times, you know, straight rate.
Robert, how would you know? I mean, are all these people gonna be working the same hours, do you think? I mean, would there be, you know, like, the support manager working so long? And, I mean, how would you sort that out?
To be perfectly honest with you, I don't know for sure. It would depend on the debris removal company, how many hours they're working, that's how many hours they're the monitoring people would work. Generally, I don't, the debris removal people, except for the first seventy-two-hour push when they're trying to get roads cleared and stuff, they would work around the clock probably, but after that, it would go to more of a forty-hour time rate, like, you'd work during the day, go home in the evening. But we would have to have the monitoring company on site any time we were doing the debris removal with the third party.
What would you do when you're going to go through and look at this? Would you just say estimate that it's gonna take X number of hours for an event, and then take each one of them and multiply what you estimate to have on the site and do it?
That's what we had, we had three or four of us together to look at it, but also, we look at their history as far as their work history, what they, where they've done this before, and look at the records. There are certain requirements that FEMA has as far as looking at that. I think one of them, for instance, is, is it a company-owned, female-owned company? Doesn't have to be, but, you know, they want you to look at that and give them everybody a fair shake, minority-owned companies and that type of thing.
How much time do you think you'd need to do all the background on this?
Probably would like to, if we can, do this. Are you gonna be meeting the first meeting of November, the second Tuesday of November, probably?
Sure.
That would probably be this month, right?
You can wait until the first Tuesday, Jane, or if you want to. We'll hand an easy one off to you, Jane.
Appreciate that. We have a big change.
No, that, I'm fine with that timetable. That's basically a month that you're looking at. What do you, how do you feel, Commissioner Patterson?
I think it would be fine. That's good to know.
What you think, Commissioner?
It'd take them a month to go through all that. If you get through it. The good thing is, they gave you a template to go by, you know, your criteria, and who you choose. That was a good guideline for going by, not just pricing, but... Then six and five, and you're, bam, what your selection criteria, the qualifications of the firm, qualifications of the staff, technical approach, and then twenty percent of it will be the cost of proposal. You'll, you'll have to delve into everything but the prices.
Yeah.
That's a good criteria to go by, though. I guess out of all the paperwork they sent us, that's the only thing I saw that was worth flipping is the selection criteria you sent.
Okay, then we need to table this, make a motion, we table this until the first meeting in November, which would be the second Tuesday. Do I hear a second on that?
Second.
Second, all right. Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, all right. All in favor? Okay, got it, Robert.
Thank you.
You gonna take it home to that and start?
Yeah.
Why is that reading?
Yeah.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
All right, item number seven, discussion of our lodging ordinance. And to give you a little background, last year, I don't remember exactly, Ms. Dawson, do you remember when we had our workshop or meeting to discuss this? Was it in two thousand eighteen, or did we?
Are you talking, when, when the Board of Commissioners voted to ask, the, the state legislature was September the twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen.
Nineteen, yeah, okay. We were trying to get that in in time for the legislature to consider it was. And that was to raise the hotel motel tax in the county from its current five percent to six percent. And we had a lot of discussion on that, and the opportunity and the motive behind this was that the additional tax revenue from the county's standpoint, of course, we split that fifty-fifty with the chamber. But we were putting these additional funds, additional increase, into public safety. And the idea is to keep the property taxes as low as we can off of the property owners, the county, particularly older folks. And the tourism business, which fuels, is a massive amount of fuel, this hotel motel tax is from visitors. So, the idea was, instead of putting pressure on the property owners with the additional needs and safety needs, equipment, to shift that back towards the hotel motel tax, which we've been doing that for some time. Back, we, we first went from where the chamber had seventy percent, the county's thirty, and we gradually amended that to sixty, forty, and then currently fifty-fifty. But that was on a five percent rate. So, we'll maintain that same fifty percent split with the chamber, but increase that tax rate from five to six. And again, every dollar that we've increased has gone back into public safety. So, that's, that's been, we felt like a good avenue. I think you advocated that even in previous administration, didn't you, Commissioner Johnson? To move that, put that requirement and the thrust of that on, on the tourism business. So, Ms. Dawson, do you have a timetable and a strategy that we need to follow on this?
Well, when you adopted this, and what lived before the state legislature was that the effective date is January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. So, in order to, to do this, we have to run the notice in the paper as to the fact that you're going to change the lodging ordinance. So, presuming that you're still going forward and you vote to do that, then you would run it in the paper the month, the week of October the twenty-first and the week of October the twenty-eighth. Then you would have a public meeting on November the tenth, just before you have this meeting, I mean, your regular scheduled meeting.
Right.
And then you would have your second public hearing up, on November the twenty-fourth. Now, that is the week of Thanksgiving. So, if there's any thought that you are not going to be having your meeting on the twenty-fourth, then we need to, we would need to actually know that now, because we would publish it then that the second public hearing would be December the eighth, which is your December meeting. And at that point in time, absent anything different, you would adopt your ordinance and it would go into effect on January the first. Only other thing that I would request that there be total clarification of is, as you requested it of the state legislature, it was to go from five to six percent. The city of Blue Ridge has made a similar request, and their request was to go to eight percent. What the legislature passed is that the county can go up to eight percent. So, if you wanted something other than the six percent that you talked about in September of last year, that would need to be discussed and it would need to, at least before the December, or before the meeting where you enacted it. But I think it would help lodging providers to know where you were going so they could start reworking their software.
If we, and of course, we'll discuss this, Commissioner, tonight, November twenty-fourth, that's Tuesday before Thanksgiving, I have no issues with us having a meeting then. Would we, at that meeting, we would have prior to the meeting a public hearing, then if we could move forward and adopt it at that meeting as well, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And we've had, as I recall, our discussions that we had here with some of the cabin rental companies, the five, going from five to six percent is, is basically a twenty percent increase, but it was something that they felt was powerful. To go from five to eight, that's a big increase. So, that's kind of where our discussion would be at this point. Commissioner Patterson, how do you, how do you feel about the timing and, and the, and moving from five to six percent?
I think probably we just keep it at six percent now, actually, and see how it goes. I don't think we need to jump that high, at this point anyway, without having further information or discussion to look at.
Ms. Dawson, do you recall if, if there were some stipulations from the state that if you go above six percent at a certain amount of, I know, I know they have that restriction on the chamber, but for the county, there are certain mandates, if we go above that, on where that money has to go to?
I know there's mandates on that a certain percentage of the first fifty, the first fifty, fifty percent of the first subs collected have to go for tourism and marketing of tourism. I haven't looked at what would, if there's any requirements, if you go above six percent, because I wasn't aware that y'all were even considering that. But I could go and find out if there's some problems you want to. And the one thing is, it's there. So, you could do six percent this year, and if the next Board of Commissioners so was inclined, it could raise it, it just has to go through the, the publication process.
Because it's already meant through the state.
Yes, that is correct.
Now, we're looking at January first, you said?
Yes, sir, that's...
Any other questions about that, or?
Well, what y'all adopted back on September the twenty-fourth was January the first of twenty twenty-one.
That won't give them enough time to change their software and stuff?
Sir, I, I, and you know, cabin companies do their thing. People run specials all the time. I, I would imagine so, but I'm, I'm not in that software part. It's certainly not a surprise because y'all, you know, adopted the resolution more than a year ago.
We can talk to some of them, probably would be at the public hearing, discuss that. I knew at one time they thought about backing it up, asking us if we'd back it up.
I have heard some of them say that they would request that you back it up, pass Martin Luther, the Martin Luther King holiday, on the, on the premise that those weekends are already booked.
Right.
Commissioner Johnson?
The, the ones I've talked to, the cabin rental, you know, they're saying they're booking, their, their software alignment booked three hundred and sixty-five days out. You know, I don't think that's an issue for the county to have to contend with. But my only question is, what kind of latitude? I mean, I guess Debbie Jackson handles all of the elections, correct?
That is correct.
I mean, what, what would, because this is gonna start after the first year, and of course, you know, two-thirds or more of a new board of commissioners. So, couldn't she have some latitude? If, if, let's just say, I mean, I don't even know how much money we're talking about per reservation, but let's just say they had already pre-reserved for Easter, I mean, all your big holidays. I mean, does she not have the latitude to, if they can prove that, to not charge that, or what is the...
It's just like paying a tax to the IRS or the state of Georgia. This is the tax rate that you pay. Or this is the tax rate to buy a car, and this is the sales tax. There's no...
Well, I mean, that's, that's fine with me. You just said exactly what I need to hear. I have no problem passing it for anywhere first. Because, I mean, when, when fuel tax goes up, they don't, they don't, they don't ever tell me. It just kind of just goes up. So, it's just kind of like being treated just like us in our business, or many businesses, when it is what it is. So, if they've already pre-booked at the five percent, then what that would mean essentially, if they booked out for next Thanksgiving, or next Christmas, or next Easter, someone in the middle's gonna have to eat that extra.
Well, or they go back to the customer. It's just like, you know, if there's a fuel rate, if the fuel, if I go and buy, put gas in one vehicle at Ingalls at nine AM, and I go back at eleven AM, it's gone up three cents. I don't get to say, but I was here earlier and I want the lower price.
Well, that's exactly what I wanted to hear you say, and I'm glad you said it. So, then, when the hearing comes about and we start hearing all that, because that's what we're gonna hear, the hearings, is that what do we do about all of our bookings at X, Y, and Z dates? And, I mean, eventually, just like out here in all of our worlds that aren't in the lodging business, when the tax goes up or the price goes up, you just pay it and go on, so.
The consumer should pay it.
So, that, that kind of answers all the, the complaints that I've fielded, is what if, you know, the, the reservations are already had in place? And, you know, the one percent, I don't think it'd be that big a deal. But I don't think one percent's gonna keep people from making their reservation, so. That's all the questions I had.
All right. I have no further questions unless myself, off that schedule. Again, what we would need to do is put that in Friday, is that when your deadline is? Friday to be on the October twenty-first issue. And then October twenty-seventh, Board of Commissioner meeting with a hearing prior to that. And then run the ad again, October twenty-eighth, and a final hearing on Tuesday.
November twenty...
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, but then, yeah, twenty-seventh, tenth, then the final on the twenty-fourth.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So, at this point, the motion should be what, Ms. Dawson?
That you want to proceed with the increase in the lodging tax from five to six percent, and for us to start the publication process.
Okay. All right. I'll ask for a motion that we approve it, just like Ms. Dawson said.
I make a motion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? All right. Guess we'll need to sign this before we, we need to sign this and have you attest to this, Parker?
Yes.
That's addressed. You don't have to sign this thing right now.
Okay, good. Save some ink. Okay. Gentlemen, that's all we had on the unfinished and new business. Do we need executive session?
I don't know.
Okay. Need to do item, Commissioner Johnson? All right, anything further before I ask for a German? All right. I'll make the motion for a German. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, folks, for coming.